Welcome everyone and thank you for attending the meeting of Education, Children and Families Policy Committee today. The meeting today is open to the public and the meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later on through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live could be recording and will rebroadcast this meeting. We have not received any public questions or petitions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Could I please request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. I will now ask each policy committee member in turn to introduce themselves and I'll go this way.
Good to see you back Chair. Hello, my name's Diane Hurst. I'm here representing the Sheffield Community Councilors Group and I'm a member for Richmond Ward.
Marouf Raff, Deputy Chair of Education, a member for Netherred and Shire.
Malaka Hayby, councillor for Bromhill and Shire.
Anne Whishack, councillor for West Echelsfield Ward.
Ian Horner, councillor for Brighton Ward.
Mahavind Marouf, councillor for Great Spot Ward and Lib Dem spokesperson for this committee.
Nickat Bishara, Netherred and Shire Ward, councillor.
Councillor John Dumb.
Thank you everyone, I'm councillor Don Dale, Chair of this committee and councillor for Shire Green and Brightside. Do we have any apologies for absence please? Get on today Chair. Thank you, there are no items on the agenda for exclusion of public and press and item number three on the agenda is declarations of interest. Can I ask whether any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business in the agenda? If so, please let me know now. No, no declarations of interest, thank you. If we go to page 11 of the pack is the minutes from the previous meeting, can I ask that members approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting of this committee from the meeting held on the 19th of December? Anything on page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Page 15? Page 16? 17? 18? 19? Are those a true record? Thank you, that's agreed, thank you. As I've said before, there are no items for questions from the public or any petitions on item five and we've not received any questions from members as of item six, so we'll go straight to item seven which is the work programme which is on page 21 in your Agenda Report pack and Rachel will be presenting this item, thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon everyone, Rachel Appleyard, Democratic Services. So the work programme for the committee aims to show all known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings. This is the last meeting of the 23-24 cycle, so you'll notice that the work programme is winding to a close. On page 24 you can see any proposed additions and amendments to the work programme since the last meeting, so there are a few items highlighted which are new and one which has been moved as well and I'll hand over to officers to answer any specific questions, thank you.
Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the work programme? Any officers wishing to discuss anything or add anything at this point? No. Councillor Dunn, did you want to ask a question?
I did, thank you, I hope you'll give me this indulgence. There's been a lot of press coverage recently about the government stopping putting free menstrual products in schools despite the massive uptake of over 90% which seems absolutely appalling and I thought in light of the agreement of stretching resources last week that it would be good if the committee could write in support that we fully support this and we, you know, completely and thank you for the indulgence, this is my last committee because I'm moving on, so thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you councillor John, are we all in agreement that the committee will write to government regarding this issue? Thank you, can we add that on to our to-do list immediately? Thank you before end of municipal year, thank you. Thank you for that councillor Dunn. So we now move on to item number eight which is our quarter three budget monitoring report and Philip Gregory will be presenting and that will be on page 34 of your agenda pack, thank you.
Thank you Chair, good afternoon members. So I'm here to present the quarter three budget monitoring report that you've got in your pack. The overall position for the council is a forecast overspend for the year of 16.7 million pounds, that's a decrease of 0.7 million pounds from quarter two, so not a huge movement between quarters but an improvement nonetheless. I think the thing that we are focusing people's attention on in paragraph 1.5.3 is the 28.5 million pound baseline pressure that's built into our budgets which we have got one-off mitigations in place that result in a lower overspend than that, but that's the amount of underlying pressure that we have in our budgets that we need to tackle in order to be financially sustainable going into the future. And so within the report it sets out a number of issues which we've covered before both at this committee and across all of our committees. The placements and demand for placements across social care, both children's and adults, are driving significant cost pressures. Home-to-school transport and SEN costs, again significant cost pressure there and homelessness and temporary accommodation are driving our cost pressures up. So within the report you'll see on page 43 of your pack it starts to delve into the overspend for this particular committee. It's worth pointing out that the overspend for this committee has increased by 2.3 million from quarter two to quarter three and that now stands at 13.2 million pound overspend compared to a budget of 13.2 million pounds, 132 million pounds rather, so nearly a 10% overspend. That does take into account the fact that, you know, a national issue around placement costs, there was huge demand for placement costs and it's a shortage of supply which then drives up the price which no doubt this committee is well aware of. There are things within the city that are having an impact on that, so for example Eldine House is a particular cost pressure that's been referenced previously. Home-to-school transport, again it's worth noting here that costs have increased by half a million between quarters, it's one of those things that we need to see in action plan to be able to address how we tackle the increasing home-to-school transport and support the children in our city accessing education. The report goes on to describe some of the funding issues and some of the savings that have been delivered and those that are at risk. I think it's also worth noting that the government didn't announce additional funding to be directed towards children's social care. A lot of the issues in this report will flow into the next financial year, there are no quick fixes for some of these issues, particularly the ones affecting this committee and so the funding that we've got from government will help us to address some of those issues but probably won't address them in their entirety. I'd also add that we had finance committee yesterday, a finance committee, members of finance committee were keen to understand what action has been taken around home-to-school travel and home-to-school transport because that cost pressure continues to increase and they were also referencing the challenge around foster carers. There's a financial saving built into the budget here and there was also an article in the press over the weekend speaking about foster carers' experiences within Sheffield, so they were keen to understand what's been done to encourage more foster carers within the city and to encourage those who are foster carers to remain foster carers, to support our most venerable children. I'll leave my comments there, thank you, but happy to take any questions.
Thank you, councillor Marouf.
Thank you Chair, I mean just following up on what Philip has just mentioned in particular around the home-to-school transport situation, I know we're obliged to do that but just looking at the figures and looking at where we stand in terms of their overall budget, I came up with the same figure, the figures that you did there, which is half a million for the number of children that we're actually expecting to come on stream for home-to-school transporting and if that sort of equates itself over a number of children because we're doing more EHCPs which means that's going to be more demand for obviously home-to-school transport and it's something that we can't really forecast for but it's something that's going to be a major challenge to the overall local authority budget and never mind just the education one. It's nearly, just doing the figures and I hope I'm actually wrong in this, which it works out at nearly a hundred pounds per child per day, looking at the figures that I've got in front of me and I stress again, I may well be wrong on that, but that is quite a significant sum that we're spending per child. So the question that arises out of that, there's a number of questions that arise out of that, is what is the contract that we have at the present time where we're looking at nearly a hundred pounds per child to be transported? Secondly, can we look at something different as to how we can function and provide the services that we need to provide but do it slightly differently? I think it needs a serious look into that because it's, because we talk about those figures but, and we address them here and then we don't follow, we really, sorry, the point I'm trying to make is we need to follow this up and we need to follow this up quite urgently because this then has a knock-on effect to the rest of the education budget on the foster caring side of things which is the other point I was going to raise, but I think this is far more important especially when you bear in mind what happened in Birmingham and their transport costs were 11 million and when they dug into it, that shouldn't have been much more than a few million pounds. So I'm not saying that we haven't done that work but what I am saying is that that work needs to be done. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Marouf, I'll let Philip Meredith and then councillor Dunn come in but as I know, as we are aware as a committee that we have got a current review taking place which Empower are doing, which have been to this committee, so that work is underway but Philip if you'd like to come in.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the question. As you've said, there's some work ongoing with that, the council has a transformation fund which is designed for exactly this sort of work where we fund activity to make sure that we can improve our service delivery. Part of that funding has been used to commission Empower and for them to come in and review this particular area of work. I'm sure Meredith can answer the question around the contracts and the provision in place, there are a range of different provisions in place depending on the needs of the specific children. Yeah, it's under review and the outcome of that should be fairly soon I understand.
Meredith.
So I think that what we can agree to do is to bring some information to one of the first committees in the municipal year about what we are doing around reviewing what's happening with home-to-school transport because there are a number of strands to it. One is about how we are making sure that we're ensuring our children are independent and actually the journey to school is part of how a child grows and becomes an adult who can move around the city well and that probably needs to be our first point of focus and if you're doing that then you're more likely to be on public transport or walking to school if that's appropriate or cycling to school if that's appropriate. And I think after that it's how do we then for those children who we need to make sure we are transporting to school, that we're doing that in an effective and efficient way? Is that through fleet services? Is that through a range of contracts with minibuses, taxis, are there conversations with our taxi providers about how they have bigger buses so you transport more children to place? How do you review that with your schools? And probably most importantly, how do you have those conversations at a really early stage with parents through the education healthcare plan reviews and annual reviews about how children do get to school and actually that role and responsibility that parents also have of getting their children to school? So there are a number of strands around it which is why it's complicated. Some of it is about behavioural change, that's what many of the reasons why Empower is in with us is to help us with those conversations about behavioural change. But what I suggest is that we have a real focus on that, we can... I'll wait, actually I've probably finished anyway, so hopefully that's covered it.
Thank you Meredith, we were told that we're going to be a fire alarm test so we'll just wait a minute.
Okay, that was eventful for our last committee for the municipal year, so thank you for that Meredith, apologies to any members of the public that are watching but we had an unexpected fire alarm test. So councillor Dunn, did you want to come in and ask a question?
Yeah, I did and it's a bit of a comment really, it links into what councillor Marouf was talking about, transport. It's the, it's at page 40, 1.6.3, homeless support in temporary exempt accommodation and the highlight in there that this isn't funded by the government and that it's done out of the council. And actually since the pressures that we've got on homelessness, the lack of suitable accommodation which I'm really pleased this council is moving in the right direction for and we've even got Prince William in the city today, so it seems really apt, is actually the pressures that puts on all the other budgets like transport as you've just been explaining. When people are moved into transport accommodation, we know how important it is that children have stability in their schools, but that cost falls on the council and I'd just like to highlight that because I think when we're looking at budgets and we're looking at everything else, we're never really highlighting fully how much we are doing to keep that stability that is so needed and again it's something that I think that really does need lobbying on. When we do find accommodation for families, it's often miles away from where they have all their infrastructure and there is a financial cost on that and it's not an easy pressure. So I just wanted to highlight that and I thought it was, you know, it's bad on the back of the budget last week and to say I'm really proud that we are doing what we're doing where we can and if there's anything else we can do.
Thank you councillor Dunn. Councillor Horner.
Just to follow up on this point about transport because we have discussed this several times now and the amount of money that we seem to be paying for taxes, I mean it seems to me it would be better if the council bought a fleet of minibuses and drivers which it could then use for other purposes because, you know, we take children to school at a certain time of the day, we bring them back another part of the day and I would have thought that a bit of joined-up thinking was necessary in this because if we actually provided our own transport, it could have other uses. And I'm just concerned that we're still talking about it, we need to get a resolution of this fairly soon because the budget pressure's been highlighted, I mean that's half a million in one quarter, that's two million in a year and it's going to go on rising. And I accept that it isn't of our making, it's because people now have an expectation of being provided with this transport, but we need to tackle this. And I, you know, I spoke to Oliver Copard about it and said, you know, is there not some link here, I've raised these points before Chair but, you know, can we not find a way not only to help ourselves but to help other parts of the council, help public transport in the city actually? And I do think it's really urgent that we do this.
Thank you councillor Horner, just on the back of that, we do have a fleet of minibuses in the council which transport our children and we do use taxis but what we have to do, when I first came into council, a piece of my casework was about getting a young person to school and I thought, well it can't cost that much just for a mile because it's like four pound there and four pound back in a taxi, but we also have to pay for chaperones as well, so there are staff that we also have to pay for. But what we can't, what we've got to consider is each child is an individual and they're not a homogeneous cohort of children that we can just chuck on minibuses and get them to spend hours and hours driving around Sheffield collecting one another, we've got to consider as well, it is far more complex than just putting children on minibuses and getting them to school because some children could spend hours travelling from where they are, it's quite a logistical issue as well. So I think that piece of work I'm sure will be being done as part of the review to look at the best financial outcomes but actually the best outcomes for children, so there are lots of layers as Meredith had expressed before, it is very complex, yes we do need to look at this in a cost-effective way but we've also got to take into consideration that what we don't want is children sat on minibuses for two hours in the morning because they've got to collect everybody else and then two hours in an evening because they've got to drop everybody else back off again, so we've also got to think about the children's wellbeing as well as our budget, so I don't know if Meredith or Philip want to come in on that.
Thank you, councillor Hurst.
Yes, thank you councillor. I just, I know there's a piece of work going on and I know we're taking this seriously but I feel that we're failing our children in not allowing them to become the best that they can be independently, making decisions about travel across the city and experiencing, as every child does, situations where they have to make decisions and learning from that, it's all part of growing up and I hope we can reach a solution rather than isolating children and bringing up a generation of children, whatever the requirements they may have, whatever the requirements we may have to fund travel to school for children with EHCPs. Bringing up a generation with expectations that they go everywhere by taxi and there are no more choices to be made because it's setting them to fail, it's not giving them the experiences that they need to become functioning adults. And I know that a review is coming forwards and what I would ask is that we, none of us here know whether we're going to be on this committee next year, but if we could place it on the agenda to have, I don't know, an in-depth fact-finding or briefing session when that report comes back so that we can see what's happening and we can share that amongst our groups and we can get behind some action plan to address those issues before, as councillor Horner says, the whole darn thing just bankrupts us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hurst, I will just ask for that to be brought forward as quickly as possible in the next municipal year and depending on who is on, I think what I would say is it's really important that committee members do attend workshops and briefings and whatnot, we have tried doing it before with not very much success but this is a major issue for the city and I think this is as much member involvement as we can get in this, as councillor Hurst has said, it would be really helpful, thank you. Councillor Bashra.
Yeah, just a quick one, again equing what Diane has just mentioned, because often when you change over in May, there's certain issues that are highlighted or discussed within committees and then because there is a new set of people, certain real issues that were worked on gets, you know, moved off the radar, so I think something that we can really take forward not just with this but any key issue that the officers actually highlight, what we can do collectively to make sure that it doesn't fall off the radar and rather, because as colleagues here have mentioned, you know, it's been an ongoing conversation which we've had and I think we do take things serious but sometimes I do feel that because of the things coming on, it often gets probably neglected and not actually worked upon, so something that you can actually put on there where we, wherever whichever committee comes in, this is something that is key issue, we need to really take that forward, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bashra, I think as we were all in agreement, we see that this issue around home-to-school transport and placement and that kind of thing are key issues nationally for any council, so it should be at the top of our agendas cross-party. So whilst we're discussing it at this committee, I would then try and ensure moving forward that this can then be taken into groups so that all groups can have a look at this as well, so it's not just within this committee but all members across the council are up to date with where we're at with this and can feed in through their representatives on this committee, so we'll make sure that that happens next year, thank you.
Any more questions or comments for Philip or Meredith on this agenda item of the budget monitoring report? No, well that's for noting, thank you very much Philip. We may now move on to agenda item number nine which is the school calendar, it is on page 51 of your agenda pack and John will be presenting this item, thanks John.
Thank you, good afternoon. So page 53 of your pack outlines the requirement to set a school calendar, the authority is responsible for community schools and voluntary controlled schools. Consultation took place between 8th of January and the 23rd of February and the proposed calendar is on page 57, Appendix A. I'd just draw your attention to paragraph 3.4 on page 55 and for the first time in a while, we've got complete consensus across neighbouring authorities on each of the school holidays, which is really good news and I think largely because Easter falls quite nicely at the beginning of April in 2026. So the request from the committee is to approve the calendar for 2025-26. As confirmed in paragraph 1.1, schools such as academies and schools of their own admission authorities are free to set their own calendar and most tend to follow ours. Okay, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you John, any questions or comments on school calendar? No, so the recommendation is that this committee approve the school calendar for 2025-26 academic year as shown in Appendix A, are we all in agreement? Thank you, that's agreed, thank you John. We now move on to agenda item number 10 which is the commissioning of social care case management and we've got Dominic, hi Dominic, thank you, presenting today, this item is on page number 67, thank you. Sorry, can you put your microphone on? Thank you.
Apologies. This is a proposal to procure and commission a social care case management system. The case management system that we currently have is Liquid Logic, it's provided by a company called System C. It consists of four modules which govern social care in adults and children, also deal with early help and there's a financial module as well. Systems used by over 3,000 council officers, covers 70 different services. Every adult or child or young person accessing social care is monitored over this system and it's vital for supporting a wide range of our statutory duties including providing pre-inspection data for Ofsted and CQC. The contract for the current system comes to an end on the 4th of May. The proposal is to procure via a process managed by commercial services alongside social care, adults and children's and also IT. And I think that's a summary of what we've got. I will emphasise as well that there's potential to introduce portal technologies for access online, but where we do that we'll always make sure that we maintain other routes for access. The proposal is for an eight-year or up to an eight-year contract. When we procured Liquid Logic seven years ago, it was sized for 1,100 users, it's now used regularly by around 1,700 users, so it's grown significantly, more people are using it, more teams are using it and so subsequently we will have to improve the infrastructure and increase the licensing which explains the added cost of up to 3.1 billion.
Thank you Dominic, do we have any questions or comments on this item? Just for members of the public, members have been briefed on this, this is not something This is not something that, just going to nod through, such a high value contract. So conversations and questions have been asked of officers with regards to processes and what this would look like for commissioning. So the recommendation is that the Education Children and Families Policy Committee approves the commission of the social care case management system from an external provider for a period of up to eight years to the estimated value of 3.1 million pounds. Are we all in agreement? Councillor Marv?
A very quick question. We have actually been briefed on this and that's why we're not asking any deeper questions on this. But when it comes to the end of, bearing in mind what we've just been talking about, the home to school and at 3.5 million, it just puts it into perspective, we're looking at a contract for 3.1 million. At the end of year eight, and I'm sure you've answered this question, so I'm being a bit simple here, is what happens at the end of year eight? Does it, do we have to then subscribe to it further or would there be a monopoly on this at the end of it where we can't go anywhere else and somebody will say, look, you've been with us for 80 years now, the cost is going to go up to 6 million and we've just got to swallow it? Is, are there any other providers out there that we'd be able to go to? I know it's a long way away, but still, it's relevant to know that. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you for the question. It is a close to monopolistic market. There are three other potential providers of the system. When we originally procured it, we did it through a competitive tender process, basically the two market leaders facing off against each other. At the end of the eight years, if we, because it's up to, potentially up to eight years, there'll be quite a lot of work to be done with the services to make sure that this is still providing for the efficient processes of social care. Now, the market will have changed by then over eight years. It's changed a little bit over the seven years, but it will have changed significantly by then. So I expect that we'll again go through a full competitive tender process. Now, that's obviously an assumption, but we do have that as an option.
Thank you, Dominic. Councillor Rolf?
Thank you. Sorry, just a quick question around a discrepancy I've just noticed. I think you just mentioned there were 1,700 users of the system, but in the report on 1.4, it said 3,000.
Yes, so concurrent users. So the 3,000 named users, at any one time, there could be 1,000 users on it or 1,700 users is the maximum which we've hit.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Were there any more questions or comments on this one? So are we happy with the recommendation to look, the committee, to approve the commission of the social care management case work for up to 3.1 million pound over eight years? All agreed? That's agreed. Thank you very much, Dominic. So the next item on the agenda is item number 11, which is on page 81 of your pack and is the review of fostering payments. And we've got Izzy who's presenting today. Hi Izzy.
Good afternoon. In 2023, we committed to reviewing our foster carer payments to make sure that they were fair, easy to understand and reflected the needs of our city's children. Just to remind you about our corporate parenting priority five, which was that carers feel supported and skilled to provide stability for young people they manage through difficult times and also that our children and young people are nurtured by carers and workers who are well resourced, valued and supported. The papers I've presented outlawed the proposals for foster carer schemes moving forward. The principles behind the proposed foster carer payment schemes are that they're simple, fair and easy to understand, that it enables Sheffield City Council to be competitive with local independent fostering agencies and other local authorities. It recognises the complex tasks of fostering other people's children, that care payments will meet the Department of Education's national minimum fostering allowances and that budget setting process is managed in such a way that increases in spend are anticipated and managed. One of the concerns expressed by foster carers was that due to the increased cost of living, they needed some reassurance that we would continue to review our foster payment scheme. So the proposal outlined six key elements of the proposals. The first one is that our foster carer payments reflect the council's priorities on improving educational outcomes. This includes a proposal that we increase the sundry payment we pay to support taking children on holiday during school holiday times, so they don't miss term time at school and some transparency about the availability of an allowance to purchase a laptop if there's not a means, any other means for a young person in secondary school to have their own laptop to undertake own work and project work at home, in the foster home. The second proposal is that we review foster carer sundries to ensure that they remain appropriate and incorporate them into the allowances to ensure simplicity of payment. We've not reviewed our sundry payments for foster carers. They're the payments for holidays, for additional clothing, for birthday allowances for quite some time. I think it's 2013 since we reviewed those payments. So what we're suggesting is that we, that those are reviewed and increased in line with inflation. That from number, from 2025 to 26, these payments are increased in line with the national increase to national minimum allowances. Each year, part of our foster payment is dictated by central government who set the national minimum allowance and the increase in line with inflation. So this year, that increase was 12.8% and next year it was 6.8%. And that's for the allowances that's for the child and the costs involved in caring for the child. The fourth proposal is that level one skills allowance is not paid until the foster carer's first annual review and the completion of the Training Support and Development Standards Manual. We found since, in 2019, we reviewed our approach and took a decision to pay the skills allowance. Immediately, a foster carer was approved at panel. Unfortunately, this has led to some significant delays in the completion of the training, skills and development standards work that's required for a foster carer to move beyond that skills level. And in fact, last month, we had 80 foster carers who had not completed that work and had gone past the 12-month recommended timescales for doing that. So by reducing that skills allowance and not paying until that's done, we're hoping we'll encourage that development and skills of foster carers. The skills allowance payments are not increased at, will not be increased at present, but will be reviewed every two years from the 1st of April to ensure that we remain competitive within the market. In 2019, we significantly increased our skills allowance at a cost of over a million pounds. And we feel that having reviewed that and compared it with our neighbours and with IFAs, we're still offering a competitive payment. So we're suggesting we keep that as it is now, but we continue, we need to continue to review that every two years to ensure we're keeping on track and competitive. And lastly, that bonuses paid to new foster carers upon the first placement post approval and upon the completion of their training, support and development standards. That's in some compensation for not receiving the skills allowance immediately.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Izzy. I've got a few. And councillor Rolf have a few as well. I think, I was reading, I've been reading through this, Izzy, and I know we're trying to make it simple for people to understand, but I found it really difficult because there's so much, there's so many different allocations of funding and if I was to be looking at becoming a foster carer, it would be really difficult for me to understand then, why am I going to give up my job? Or, you know, what, how can I dedicate my time and not to a young person? I think that, so for me, I understand there's a weekly allowance, which is for the child, for all the costs that come for looking after a child, you know, your utilities and your activities and clothing and all that sort of stuff. My concern is about the other allowance with regards to us not giving people that weekly allowance, the skills allowance. But I think looking at the cost of the skills allowance, if you were a new foster carer, you'd be able to, you'd probably be starting off sort of at level one. So the bonus, I suppose, would then cover that until you qualify. So I did do, I did read it and I'd kind of, you know, worked that out. The one element of this that does worry me slightly is if we have to place a child in foster care and they end up at a new school, is the school uniform allowance, it's just not enough. I did a bit of a back of a BIM calculations yesterday and looked on supermarket websites and our local academy, how much it would cost to give a child a basic school uniform. And that was 242 pound 50 without PE kit. So that's kind of really not, and that's for your basic, you know, supermarket trousers, supermarket shirts, school blazer and the fact that a lot of academies now expect children to be wearing logo jumpers, logo ties, logo blazers. I just, I worry that the allowance for school uniform for our foster children is not enough. And then if they only have to have like one pair of trousers and a shirt to fit within this criteria, the added cost then for a family for laundering clothes every day. If you, you know, I don't know if you've had teenage children, I have, you know, you lose a tie halfway home, your trousers are covered in grass stains and your shirt needs washing every day. So you need more than one. So I think for me, I just worry about the school uniform allowance and I know that would be a one-off or it might not come at all because we do try and keep children, like cows had done said before, in their school that they're used to going to. So that was the one thing for me. And just the other thing with regards to extracurricular activities, and this, I'm just going to indulge myself with this, but, you know, this is where we need to be. And I know I've emailed colleagues and we've had conversations about this across the council, but we've just launched our community parenting strategy and we are all corporate parenting strategy for anybody who don't understand the new terminology. We in Sheffield are all corporate parents, including our corporate partners. And I think it would be really important that we have an ask, if anybody happens to be watching from an ice cream chain or a cinema or a bowling alley or a restaurant or wherever, where we start to ask our corporate partners about what can they offer to our children in Sheffield, to our looked after children, for discounts and offers for our foster families to enable our children to be able to access some of those extracurricular activities. So I know that piece of work's ongoing and I'd like, we'd like to see that as part of our foster carers offer. But yeah, the bit that concerns me is the school uniform allowance. Does anyone, sorry, I'll come back on that and then I think I saw some other answers go up.
It's just to note, in terms of school uniform allowance, that is an additional payment and part of the fostering allowance does include a percentage for clothing on a weekly basis. So that's a boost when a young person moves into a new placement. The foster carer can also have access to a settling in allowance as well to buy new, sometimes children come with not sufficient suitable clothing regardless. So we do have access to additional budgets where required for that.
That's great. Thank you, Izzy. Councillor Rolf?
Thank you. Thank you, Izzy, for the report. Just a number of questions actually. I mean, the first one, it's probably the most important, given the cost of living and the amazing work our foster carers do, especially when foster caring is such a demanding job that requires significant time, effort and emotional investment. Was there ever a consideration made to increase above the recommended amount set by the government? And if not, why not?
So our skills allowance is the council's ability to increase that. That's within our gift to look at, that's the remuneration element of fostering allowance. And that's the allowance that I've compared with other neighbouring authorities and we pay significantly more than a number of neighbouring authorities and we're competitive with independent fostering allowances. That was a significant increase, that remuneration in 2019 on a range of different elements. So that's the allowance that I'm suggesting we review in two years' time. It feels competitive currently.
Okay. When you say competitive, I mean, is that competitive to our regional neighbours or to other core cities?
It's comparing it with regional neighbours. It's comparing it with Barnsley, Rotherham, Doncaster, Derbyshire and Leeds and an average payment for independent fostering agencies.
Thank you. And I note here that we're looking to increase the school holiday allowance. For example, a not to five-year-old, to 505 pounds in 2024, 2025. That's on page 91 on the agenda. What I want to ask about that 505 pounds is, does the council, do you yourself, do you really believe that is going to be an incentive to not take kids out at term time, given the significant increases to holiday costs in holiday time?
We're suggesting that we increase the school holiday. Once again, a percentage of fostering payments is for holidays and for activities. So this is an additional allowance to boost that payment. So it's an additional 250 pounds per child per year and a little bit.
Sorry, I just want to check those figures. So on page, page 91?
Yes.
I can see 505 pounds for the school holiday allowance for a not to five-year-old.
So previously, we paid 250 pounds less than that, so it's increasing.
So it's nearly double then?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. My question was really, does the council really believe that is an incentive not to take kids out during term time? Because I've got kids and I've looked at holidays during term time and holidays out of term time. And unfortunately, I have to swallow the cost, but I'm not going to admit in here that I'd take my kids out of term time, but if I was going to, it would cost me significantly less than if I was to take them out during holiday time. So I was just asking about that figure. Do we think that's a reasonable amount?
We don't believe it covers the full cost. That's in addition to that element of the fostering fee.
Not, that's fine. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Rolf, Meredith. We are very clear that we expect our children to be only taken out of school in school holiday times and that is a similar conversation we have with our foster carers. And, you know, that's part of our expectation.
Thank you, Meredith. The other question I had was around the level one skills allowance. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but we are now changing how we're paying that. So we're paying 1,000 pound upfront and then 1,500 pound if they complete the qualification within the first year. Is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Okay, so if we're not going to pay the 1,500 pound if they complete the qualification after the 12 months, then what incentive is there for foster carers to complete the qualification after 12 months?
Sorry, the payment, the second payment will be made once the qualifications completed.
So just for clarity, if they complete the qualification 18 months, 24 months after they first start fostering, will that second payment still be made? Okay, that's fine. And one other question I did have, it was around the, an article that came out last week and just want to clarify some figures in that particular article. One of the, one of the figures given in that article was that there is, just really out verbantum, the proposal seems to be that the new carers will receive a lump sum, 1,000 pound for their first year with a placement instead of the current rate of 6,500 pound per annum. Can I just check? And I think I have an understanding, but that weekly payment is not being removed. Is that correct?
The skills payment, this is the, the bonus is instead of the skills payment.
Okay.
That's in line with other local authorities. Neither Barnsley, Rotherham, Doncaster, Derbyshire or Leeds pay the skills payment until that work's been done. Originally, it was introduced in 2019 with the hope that that might be an incentive to recruit more foster carers. that that might be an incentive to recruit more foster carers.
Okay, but the weekly payment that we pay foster carers is still going to be paid as outlined on page ninety-one?
The maintenance allowance element of that payment, yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Meredith, did you want us to come in on this?
Well, I just wondered, I mean, I think, I think Izzy, you've been in conversation with foster carers throughout around this. And, and certainly, um, the newspaper article is a group of foster carers who have a particular view about it and valid view. But you've, I don't know whether it's just helpful, just perhaps saying some of, um, the conversations that you've had with those groups of foster carers and the different views around this. It just might be, be helpful.
One, one of the, um, second drivers regarding the skills payment is we're, we're in a, you'll, you'll know it has been reported at previous meetings that within Sheffield, we're doing a, um, really good job at keeping children with family members and extended family members. Uh, and that's called a regulation twenty-four payment, uh, approval. It's when we, um, assess family members to become foster carers. And within the same article, you might have noticed, uh, details about recruitment figures. What that, those figures didn't include were those family-based carers. The difficulty we have is that most of those, um, families come to assessment with the view of moving away from social services once that assessment's completed and any activity in court's completed. They never come with the intention of being long-term mainstream foster carers. With our current skills allowance, that, that would mean that as soon as one of that family members were approved, that skills allowance would stay with that family member, regardless of whether they may, remained a mainstream carer. Uh, and, and that's at a significant cost to the local authority and not within the intention of the original setting that allowance. So part of this review was to ensure that the council funds and budget is, um, is, in, in some ways, ring-fenced to ensure that we're, uh, u- using it as best we can to recruit those mainstream carers who are caring for other people's children. Uh, and when that was explained to our fostering community, people had a better understanding of the motivation behind it. It's, it's to try and ensure that as budgets get tighter, that we protect those budgets to continue to recruit those, um, members of the community stepping forward to re, to care for, um, children that they've no relationship with in the longer term.
Thanks for that, Izzy. Just one final thing, uh, just, uh, similar to what councillor Dale said at the start. Um, with, with all these different payments, it, it was quite confusing going, going through the report. And I recognise there's loads of different payments. But when I, when I tried to look for information online, uh, around, around some of these payments, again, that was, that was quite, quite difficult to do as well. So a lo- a lot of this information around payments, is it, is it public or is it private? And if it is private, why is it private? And if it is public, why is it not more easy to find?
Uh, Sheffield City Council fostering payments are public, um, are public documents and, and able to find perhaps the link. I think some of the links to the Sheffield City Council website are not quite as transparent as they could be. Um, certainly that the, the payment, um, scheme is what we share regularly, recruitment events. Um, I, I did speak to a foster carer at a recent event who was saying it's a very long time since they had the handbook shared with them in paper form. I think she quoted a nu- quite a number of years ago. And I did promise that moving forward, um, if this proposal was agreed, that I'd ensure that that was, that was available as well, that it was a paper, um, document available to carers who might not be, have the access to the internet that everybody expects.
Thank you, councillor Dunn.
Thank you. And this is such a, an important thing to be discussing. We're discussing payments today, but actually, we can't discuss payments without looking at the service in a whole. And I know from the time that I was there, I met so many foster parents, just how important it is and how emotive it is, do you know? Because foster parents do an absolutely amazing job. And the one thing that I feel after the discussion and the really pertinent questions, and I, you know, is that we're trying to level that playing field. So being a foster parent isn't just for somebody who can afford to be. Because we know that so many foster parents, it's not just about having the home, it's having the right heart and having everything else. So I've just got a couple of questions to ask, is what more could we do about joining up? Going back to the cost of living, we know how dramatically, there can't be a person in this room that hasn't, you know, isn't doing something to adjust to do that. And I'm lucky, I live on my own, so I can be as freezing cold as I need to be. But as soon as I have people in it, you don't want them to be, and it's certainly not a foster ca-, you know, parent. Is what are we doing about, you know, we've noticed in the report, it says there's delays, some timers in getting council tax reduction, everything else. And we know that these letters are automatically generated, do you know? So, but that would upset me if I got it. Also, the rising cost in insurance, and it's not just home insurance, it's car insurance and everything else, and M O T. What are we doing to help with that? Have we got any insurers that could help? What are we doing? Because it's those fixed costs that are all the time that we could really do more about, which might really be an incentive to put, you know, to helping people come forward. Also, when, when I was in Dawn's very privileged position, I did have a number of times, people from outside Sheffield, you know, we don't, we've got borders, do you know? But we do have family occasionally that live in Rotherham, Barnsley and Doncaster. And we all, you know, I know that there's a big border that sits over that. And when you're wanting to temporarily foster from outside, it can be very, very difficult. Are we improving that? Is the financial constraints on it? Because I think we're really doing it, and I know this affects the Bain community quite highly. So again, I mean, I had three cases that were Bain when I was under there. So I really would like to know. So I know I'm touching outside, but I think in light of what councillor Marouf has highlighted, it is important that we look at the big picture. Thank you. Sorry, lots of little things there.
Absolutely. And, and the conversations I've been having with foster carers is that it's not just about that financial support, it is about being felt, feeling like the valued members of the community. So I do have a meeting in my calendar already to meet with the director of, of business and economy and her team to discuss what we can do to ask outside into the city, what they can contribute towards our carers, towards our, towards being a community parent, really, what offer they can, they can offer. Um, and, and so it will be looking at those kind of, whether it's cheap gym membership or support, or becoming a fostering friendly employee who would recognise as the value of foster carers and what they can do to support their employees to become foster carers. So we're looking at a range of measures to try and increase the value and understanding of the work and the commitment that we have from our fostering family within Sheffield. Um, as, uh, just as an aside as well, in terms of peer support and working with, across Sheffield, with our, uh, early colleagues in early help, to look at what we can do about creating a stronger peer support with, amongst our foster carers. Because I know that's an incredibly valuable way of sharing some of the information that you've referred to, who are the best insurers, who are the best, where, where, where can we find the best support and the best offers, uh, for foster carers? So we've got a number of initiatives that we're really kick-starting this year to try and, uh, increase that support and that feeling being valued.
One final bit was about pocket money. And, do you know? These ch- you know, ten pounds a week isn't a lot of money. And these children may want to buy their brothers, sisters something, because it can be very difficult. And is this set by us or is this national guidance figures? Do you know? Because if we put here, we're encouraging them to save, you know, the treats for yourself or being able to stand on your own two feet, which we talked about earlier, about transport, are really important. And I'm not, you know, it's just that I know that being able to buy your mum something, send the parent, because these are fostered, they're fostered, hopefully they're going back. There's, every, every situation is different. But enabling, it's quite empowering to a young person to be able, and I know from the work that I did with our children in care, how they often, do you know, you think it's, you know, what they get seems like a lot of money, but it isn't when the decisions they're having to make and take are very grown-up ones. And I kind of feel in some ways that pocket money, yes, fine, save some, I used to save mine. But it's also, do you know, to, to be able to treat yourself and the emotional trauma that a lot of these children are going through, sometimes being able to treat yourself and just do something that you want to do, it's never been more important. So just a comment, sorry, a little bit of a question.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Uh, councillor Marouf, did you want us to come in on this one?
Yeah, thank you. My, mine's just an observation rather than a question. But as I said, it's wonderful work that foster carers do and I think we all appreciate the work that they actually do. Um, and so we should. Uh, page one hundred and eleven of two hundred and twenty-four, it's just a slight observation there. Uh, and the question, there may be a question arising out of that, which is, uh, the diversity of, uh, our foster carers. Uh, I know this is an issue that we struggle with across the country. Um, and the figures still don't look particularly brilliant there. Uh, i- is, is there any measure against, uh, other local authorities, where they're doing better than we are in terms of, uh, diversity of our foster carers? And also, I think they picked up on this chair about, uh, the confusion around, uh, payments, which I think you've mentioned already. But I'm just looking at the, how we can attract more diverse foster carers into, into doing this sort of service.
Absolutely. Um, and this year, that's been a, a real priority for us. You may have seen that we've had a, a targeted recruitment campaign to get placements for our young refugees who come to live with us in Sheffield. And that was both for foster carers, but also for supported lodgings. Uh, we hope that supported lodgings might be a taster for someone who's not sure about fostering or not in a position yet to give him, give up paid employment, but may have space in their home. So we, um, we launched the, uh, supported lodgings and targeted recruitment campaign just before Christmas, and so far, we've been really pleased with the results. Uh, we're assessing ten, uh, carers as a result of that campaign. Um, and hopefully, they'll be, be going through our new panel for supported lodgings in the next couple of months. So we're open to see some success. We know what really makes a difference is if, um, for fostering, is if it's recommended by someone who's trusted within the community. So we have really tried to reach out, uh, over the last few months into communities, um, to, to try and build up that understanding and, and create some of those improved relationships to promote that, um, to promote that initiative. And it's certainly something that we've worked hard on. Um, we've worked with our communications, um, support to look what's happening across the country and to look at how we can improve our campaign, um, to, um, really target those carers. So it is something that's a real focus this year, and we're starting to see, um, some, um, reaps and benefits from that.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. I've, I've just got one comment, I don't know if it's a comment or a question. I've been recently gone around and visited some of our, um, supported accommodation for our, uh, I had the privilege of meeting some of our unaccompanied asylum seeker children. Um, and I know that councillor Rove and councillor Marouf have also been around and, and visited some of, some of our, uh, providers. Um, and I think this also fits in with our foster caring families as well, is the, the, the budget for, um, culturally appropriate products. So hair care products are far more expensive for children from black backgrounds and mixed-race children. You, you, you're not going to buy your ninety-nine p, ninety-nine p shampoo, I know myself. You're looking at twelve pound for a bottle of shampoo, seven pound minimum. Do we take that into account when we start looking at these budgets? And I don't, I don't think we do. And I think if we're asking families to take our children in and to provide them with the appropriate skin and hair care, I think we need to maybe look at that a, a, a bit, a bit closer, and particularly for our young people who are living independently. And when we look at their allowances, in order for them to be able to be the, and feel the best that they can be, they need to have access to these products and they are really expensive, uh, no matter where you try and buy them from. Um, so if we can please just take that into account. It was a young person raised it with me and then ironically, I thought, yeah, actually, my experience in life has been buying air care products for my daughter, it's, it can, it can, it can, it can bankrupt you, to be quite honest. You know, you're only gonna go in an air shop and before you know it, you've, you've spent an absolute fortune. So I just think if we can take that into account and just review that, um, and I'd, I'd appreciate if we could do that, thank you.
Absolutely.
So in, in, we're coming to the end of the report. The recommendation today is, bear with me, because I've flipped around my pages, is that we agree the policy on payments for foster carers and approve the variation of payments as approved. Could we, could we, could I make one slight amendment in that we just take into account and we just have a review of the additional costs for, uh, culturally appropriate products for our families and our young people, please? Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So if we can, oh yeah, sorry.
Also take into account if children have got medical illnesses and things like that, do you know, that might, yeah.
We do, we do pay an additional allowance, um, for young people who've got a disability and, um, and may be entitled to, um...
Could I also go, does that also go with menstrual products? Do you know, if young people do have, you know, because we know, especially in Bain, do you know, how much heavier young people's periods can be? And there is a massive cost. So I know I keep banging on about this, but it keeps getting ignored, do you know? Not by us, but I meant, do you know, nationally? And I think we do need to look at that. I don't see why children should spend their pocket money on something, do you know, like that? And it might be quite awkward to be, do you know, to have to ask your foster parent for more? Do you know? But there is, do you know, lots of things that are quite different, yeah? So I think we ought to look at that and look at the work that we've been doing in Sheffield on that.
Absolutely.
So we can link that together, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Okay, so are we all, do we all, um, agree the recommendation? Oh, sorry, councillor Rove?
Yeah, sorry councillor Dale, could I just get some clarity on what, what it is we, we are going to vote for, given the additional elements that you've asked for?
Yeah, I think what I'm asking for, councillor Rove, is that we approve the agreed policy for foster carers, approve the variations of payments as proposed, but review, um, the, uh, additional, uh, allowances for culturally appropriate products.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we all agreed? Thank you. Thank you, Izzy. Okay, we now move on to agenda item number twelve, um, which is the renewal of contract with Nexus Multi-Academy Trust to deliver the medical needs education service. And today presenting, we have Polly McKinlay and Jo Horraby, thank you.
So I'm gonna let Polly speak to this because she is our expert on it. Take it away, Polly.
Okay, so I'm here to tell you about Chapel House, um, which is a service that provides education for children who are too unwell to attend, attend school. So it's based in Hillsborough, it's part of Beckton and run by Nexus Academy Trust. Um, it's a really important service. Uh, it sees mostly children who are unable to attend school for psychological reasons. Um, so most of these children are under the care of CAMHS. Many of them, their attendance at school drops to pretty much nothing. And what we see is an average attendance of three percent for children when they start at Chapel House, going up to an average of around forty to fifty percent. So that's really fantastic. I visited a couple of weeks ago, um, and really kind of varied cohort of children. Some are children who, you know, no other problems have been going on. And then suddenly, they might find themselves as an inpatient, um, in hospital, having undergone a psy- a psychotic episode, um, and then, you know, really destabilising for them. Um, and there was a couple of students that I, when I visited a couple of weeks ago, whom that had been the case for. And Chapel House is such a lifeline for keeping the education going for those children once they're discharged, um, from inpatient services, um, making sure that they get their qualifications, English, maths, science, G S Cs are offered. Um, and, you know, there'll be other children who might have struggled more at school and it's been kind of an ongoing thing for a while, but their attendance has been dropping and dropping. And that's where Chapel Health comes in and, and works with these children and addresses some of those anxiety factors, um, and gets them back into education. Um, so it's a really important service that, um, kind of addresses our legal duty that we have towards these children, but also thinks, you know, how do we make sure that these children succeed as best as they can in this phase of education? in this phase of education and go on to the right path at 16? And they've got a really good record in that. The service is really good in terms of the progress of the children and the attendance that they make. Can be a real challenge in the context of kind of other cuts to mental health services. So sometimes children might get referred, but then there's still a wait for them to be seen by CAMHS. And generally, we've seen the demand on this service increase. Now, that's in line with what's happening across the country in terms of challenges for attendance at school, very much impacted by increasing concerns about children's mental health. So we need to increase the number of places that we commission in this service in order to make sure that we can meet our legal duties and support children as they need to. However, there's also a real need to equip schools to manage in these scenarios. Because what we sometimes see is that child will have been absent for a long time before they get referred to Chapel House. And there's a question of, well, what's all the work we can do as soon as a child's attendance starts dropping slightly? Where do we then kind of come in and say, right, how are we going to make sure we're supporting you around anxiety, providing a reduced timetable if needed, and work with those children? So part of the recommission is about undertaking a pilot service with schools to try and help them understand how they can help children. And ultimately, hopefully, prevent children needing a service like Chapel House and being able to address those things beforehand. So it's kind of, I think it's really important. I think it's a really tricky service to get right. And I'm really happy with how the provider at the moment is performing. But it's, you know, it's not an easy context. So any, any questions? I'm happy to address.
Thank you. I've, I've got, I don't know if, again, I don't know if there's a question or a comment, but we're talking about education here, aren't we? So we're talking about the education of our children or young people who are currently going through a health issue. So where do health fit in with this? So we're asking schools to do a lot more work with our children and young people around their mental health and wellbeing. And we are looking at, this is an educational element of that. But, and I understand what the ask is, is for us, and I am very aware of the work that's going on at Chapel House, and, you know, it's really good stuff. And our young people are getting really good support there. But I'm just trying to understand, when it comes to, you talked about hopefully working with schools to do the prevention so that we, our children and young people, where do we influence and how do we get health on board to be able to ensure that, one, our children and young people don't get there in the first place? But then when it comes to the cost, is there an element of this that can, that is funded through health? Or is this all funded through education? I don't know, can answer that, I'm just.
So the Chapel House Commission is all funded through education because, as you mentioned, it's an education service. And what we expect is that CAMHS are, for example, working alongside in providing therapy to these children, kind of addressing the health side. But, I mean, I think you bring up a really, really important point in that, in terms of sort of addressing those needs together. And Jo, you might know a bit more about what's going on in terms of the healthy minds work and.
Yeah, absolutely. It is, I mean, it's something that's a very live topic. We talked about it actually this morning with health partners about how can we best as a whole system support children and young people and schools and parents, carers, families, to support young people to stay in and belong in their, in their schools. And, you know, obviously, mental health services are part of that. And also, pre-mental health referral services are really important there. So I think it's a really important question. This is about a very specific cohort of children who are sort of medically unfit to attend school. But I think you absolutely, you raise a very valid point. And, and I can only assure you really that from a commissioning perspective, but also from a, from a sort of transformation perspective, it is something that is occupying a good deal of our time and concern across us and, and health colleagues.
That's great. Thank you, Jo. Councillor Don and then councillor Basra.
Yeah, apologies if you covered this while I had to nip for a toilet break. Point 1.17, you've just touched on it there about the mental health support, CBT, and how you're working with the families. Could you just expand on that and explain that? Because it's such an important part, is, I think, the whole approach that we've gone as the committee and that we're moving to, it's children and families, and they're not separate. So I think that that, even though the school's about the children, the confidence with the parent and everything else and the work that we do, I think just a little bit of an expansion would be really helpful. I apologize if you did cover it.
Yes, that's certainly something we can talk about more. So one of the things we've noticed with Chapel House is that sometimes we see siblings from the same family group. And we know that, you know, whilst mental health issues do run in families to a certain extent, we also know that a lot of this is about how families feel about school and how confident families are in school, in the school provided for their child. And we need to sort of work with families to increase that confidence. And that's partly about kind of changing the family-school relationship a little bit and saying to families, this is how we're supporting your child in school. And, you know, that needs to be matched with the support for the child in school. But, yeah, we have worked in thinking about referrals to Chapel House. I've had conversations with parents who are saying, you know, my school doesn't understand what my child needs. And so being able to say to a family, okay, we're a specialist service, we're working with your child's school to make sure that they understand what your child needs. And therefore, you, your confidence, you can have confidence in the school to meet your child's needs. I think that is really important. And we often also see students who, school attendance has dropped. There's sometimes quite a difficult mix of factors, including parental mental health. So it's about this service, you know, schools don't always have the time and the resources to pick all of that apart. So it's about this service coming in and saying, okay, what, what are all the different things going on here? How do we pick some of this apart? And how do we get the right bits of support at the right time for the family as well as for the child in isolation? Because no child is in isolation there within the context of the family.
Councillor Basra.
Thank you. I relate to some of the stuff that you've shared because working with the children with sickle cell and thalassemia, and then obviously having to engage with the school, having put in care plans and who to collaborate with and awareness sessions for the staff who will be actually working with the children. I think in one of the sessions, and I think you've mentioned as well, the belonging framework, that, I mean, I, I think was really, really brilliant work. And I think it's still in pilot stage or something. Is that right?
It's, it's, I would say it's an ongoing piece of work. It is, you know, it is a dialogue that we, that we.
Because a lot of the stuff.
I believe it's on the agenda, so I don't want to steal anyone's thunder.
Because I, I think, just touching on that, when it was actually shared last time with one of your colleagues, I felt a lot of the stuff that we hear from families, and similar to what you've shared, it was feeling from the presentation that it covers and tackles a lot of this stuff, to each child feeling a sense of belonging in the school, which is whether your, you know, your culture background, your ethnicity, your, your needs, your health needs. So I, I really, really, you know, look forward to, to that being implemented and put through the way it was presented. I think it will tackle a lot of this stuff, but rightly so. Like you mentioned, I think some sort of collaboration. I know individually, schools do do some collaboration if they came across some child with certain medical, you know, conditions to get awareness. They'll tap into a service or a community service. As we all know, there is a lot of costs in that side. So there, there's resources aren't enough for people to come in and provide those services. But some sort of collaboration work where schools can be supported, tapping into those places. Because at the moment, I know each service out there is doing their bit, going and collaborating or engaging with the schools and trying to find an hour or something at the staff meeting to try and raise awareness on certain things and how you can support this child or who to contact. But some sort of stronger collaboration work would really be, I welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you. Okay, any more questions or comments on this report? Councillor Biskin.
Just a few quick questions, really very simple questions. And forgive me if they're already in the report. Once identified that a young person would benefit by being at Chapel House, how long would they wait to actually get a position there? On average, how long are they there? And what percentage of them will return to their mainstream school? Or do a percentage of them never go back to school? You're saying here that, you know, it's kind of reached capacity. And so you're now in a position where you're going to have to extend. So is it fair to say then that we, we just do not have the right amount of space for the children, young people who need this facility?
In terms of referral, so we have a referrals panel every month. And as soon as a referral panel, the referral goes into the panel straight away, decision is made straight away, the child will start the next week. So things move pretty quickly once a referral is received. I think the tricky bit is sometimes we'll receive a referral and this child hasn't been at school for more than a year. So it's about thinking, well, what happened earlier on? And, you know, there, there's an extent to which, well, it's not going to be the first port of call this service, but also it shouldn't be something that happens after a year or two years. So I think there's a bit more work to do there, thinking about early intervention. Children stay, I think the average length of stay is between one and two years. Some children do end up completing their GCSEs at Chapel House and not going back to mainstream school. Part of it depends on when they arrive. So if they arrive in year 10, then it's not usually feasible to get them back into their school before year 11. We are trying to do more on reintegration of students who arrive earlier. There are, of course, many challenges to this. It's about getting schools to understand what children need in those environments. Some children transition into special school places, but that's not going to be appropriate for every child. And yes, not, not a high percent of children are kind of going back. I would like to see that changed a little bit. I think the difficult thing is, is once children get to Chapel House, it's not somewhere that you'd ever want to leave because it's, it's fantastic. So I think some of this earlier intervention stuff is thinking more about how can we keep supporting children in the schools that they already belong in, rather than taking them out? So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So the recommendation for today's report is to approve the commissioning of a service contract with a term of two years from September 2024 and a value of £3.347.171 million for the provision of medical needs education service from an external provider. Are we all in agreement? That's agreed. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we now move on to agenda item number 13, which is the annual update of the Building Successful Families Programme. And you're, neither of you are married. And please don't fall over. This is on page 125. Thank you. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and give us the report, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Amy Boudreaux. I'm head of commissioning for children and families.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emily Ward. I'm commissioning officer for early years and early help, focusing predominantly on the early help aspect of that.
So Emily's going to talk us through the paper.
Thank you. Yeah, so thank you all for having us this afternoon. I am going to provide our annual update of the Building Successful Families Programme, which looks at the early help system as a total system of support for children, young people and families in the city. There are a number of successes that we've had over the past year, which we're really proud of. But we are going to highlight over the main ones at the moment. And then we can take any questions at the end. So I think probably the most important one is that we've returned earned autonomy status, which means that we've continued to show that high level of system and data transformation and maturity, which is something that only one of 15 local authorities had up until the start of the year. That has increased. So I think there are now 19 local authorities with earned autonomy. But Sheffield has held that since 2018, so we're really proud to keep hold of that. We also have to submit an annual early help system self-assessment. So that looks again at the system in its wider sense, the workforce, communities, family voice and feedback, data and leadership. And the national team last year had noted very strong practice across all of those descriptors, especially within the workforce sector. They noted the early help partnership training offer that is free for any student, volunteer or professional working with children, young people and families in the city, and actually how well the Family Hub and Building Successful Families Programme are aligned. They didn't actually mention anything about our priority descriptors last year, but we know that we're making good progress against those. So there was a real focus on formal early help activity across the partnership and what that looks like outside of internal local authority services. So as one of the main updates on this, we have just commissioned three volunteering community partners, so SO, MCDT and South Yorkshire Women's Christian Association to support families with formal early help activity as of 1st of April.
Sorry, can I just come in there, please? I need to, I didn't realise that. I didn't know that. I need to declare an interest on this, on this item as I work for MCDT. So I'll declare an interest there. I'm not directly impacted by it financially, but the organisation that they've commissioned, is there an organisation that I work for? And I didn't know they'd been commissioned because I wouldn't need to know that in my role. So do I need to declare an interest? I'm not paid through this contract.
For my clarity, is, is, is this decision confirming that that commission takes place? Or is it noting that it's already been done?
Sorry, we've just, it says that this, this paper is for noting, but it's asking us to approve a proposed financial plan for 2024/25 budget of the programme. So although the paper's for noting, in the recommendations, there's a asking us to approve the proposed budget.
So, yeah, so, so, so thank you very much, Chair, for raising that. There's a, it sounds like it could be a disclosable pecuniary interest because you are an employee of an organisation that could, that essentially, essentially is affected by the decision. So I think for absolute certainty and confidence, it may be sensible to invite the deputy chair to take over for the remainder of the item. We can call you back in. Thank you for raising that.
Thank you. I just brought it up. It does say that this is a paper for noting, but actually, there is a bullet point that says it's for approval. Thank you.
Chair. Yeah, sorry, if you want to continue.
Apologies. That is hot off the press. It's in something that we're starting from 1st of April with partners. So I'll just continue from where we were. So the main focus, so this programme is only commissioned nationally until March 2025. That's coming to an end of a three-year programme that was introduced. And one of our main priorities is returning that earned autonomy status. So one of the biggest successful criteria that the National Department look for in that is that we meet a successful number of outcomes for families achieving significant and sustained success. So that's increased significantly with over 100% from last year's, from last financial year's 825 to over 1600 next financial year. We are pleased to say that Sheffield has met our successful outcomes for this year. That has just come through from our performance and analysis service. So we've met that 105% of successful outcomes, meaning that 1,402 families have achieved significant and sustained success. meaning that 1,402 families have achieved significant and sustained success over the last year under this programme. To meet the targets next year, because there is a significant increase, we are working with different partners, looking at how formal early help is delivered to ensure that we can evidence that impact across the early help system. And one of the ways that we want to continue the data transformation and early help maturity is working with partners to improve automated data transformation. So one of the biggest things is I work with South Yorkshire Police and the three other local authorities within the district to look at, um, scoping and automated two-way information sharing agreement. We've also held the Early Help System Guide workshop in February. That was the biggest one that we've had so far with over 100 people in attendance and 29 services, which is great. And that starts to formulate our early help system self-assessment for this financial year, which we have to submit to the national team by the start of July. And then finally, now that we've got the committee system in place, we did say that last year we would bring that spend overview annually to ensure full transparency of the systems. So, um, you will note that within section 4.3.9, sorry, it does look at the spend that we've got over the system for the upcoming year. If anybody's got any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Emily. Questioned one? Okay. So.
We've got recommendations to approve. We've got recommendations.
Um, yeah, sorry. So it's recommended, recommended that the committee continue to endorse its strategic developments across the early help system in ensuring that Sheffield retains earned autonomy and continues to prioritise early help for children, young people and their families. We note the developments and achievements within the Building Successful Families Programme over the next, over the 23, 24 financial year and approves the proposal, proposed financial plan for the 24, 25 budget of the programme. Are we all in agreement with that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Chair, I'll just go and, oh, I think we're just going to call Chair back in. Thank you for stepping in, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor O'Leary, for stepping in on that, uh, item. So is that item all cleared up now? And we've moved on to item number 14, which is pupil outcomes in Sheffield's school settings and the impact of Learn Sheffield Commission, which is on page 155 of the agenda report pack. You're going first. If you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Patrol, Assistant Director of School Effectiveness.
Andrew Jones, Director of Education Skills.
And I'm Bob Cuff, School Advisor and Education Skills.
And Stephen Betts from Learn Sheffield.
Thank you. I've been asked to update the committee on pupil outcomes and reflect on the impact of the Learn Sheffield Commission, which has been discussed previously. I'm going to hand over to Stephen Betts, who's going to talk to this document today.
Okay, so we've, we've brought along a very short slide deck. It obviously comes, as you'll have seen, from a full performance analysis that's more than 80 slides. So the idea of this is it picks out the things that might be of interest, but obviously happy to go wherever you want to go in terms of the discussion. Uh, so we'll just use this as a way of kind of teeing up that conversation, if that's okay. Um, so firstly, on the Learn Sheffield side of things, that's good, a click works, excellent. Um, Learn Sheffield's had an independent evaluation, which finished, uh, finished a few weeks ago. Um, and so that feels timely in terms of, in terms of this discussion, in terms of conversations that have been had here about the impact of Learn Sheffield. Obviously, the evaluation is of all of the work of Learn Sheffield over the past eight years. And I appreciate this committee's interest will be in the impact of Learn Sheffield in terms of its delivery of a school improvement commission, which is only a part of that. We're obviously, we're really proud of the, of the evaluation and particularly the feedback within it and some of the outcomes that we'll come on to talk about, particularly in relation to Ofsted. Um, I think I would say two things, though, beyond that. One is we're particularly proud of it, given the credibility and the, um, the robustness, I think I'll use it as a polite word as I'm on camera, um, of the colleagues who were involved in, in doing that, in doing that evaluation. There's some, you know, some very significant people involved in that. Um, I think also, I would say, one of the things that Learn Sheffield wanted from that evaluation was that challenge that helps us to understand what our future shape should look like and what we should focus on moving forward, and I think it does that. So I would acknowledge the positives in there, but also I think that's, that's actually the bit that we're probably most, that's probably most significant to us. I won't say any more about that. Obviously, I might have to come back and talk about it, but that's the sort of, the, um, that's the, the, the main part of that. Um, and I think colleagues, council colleagues included the executive summary of the, of the, of the evaluation as, as part of the document in lay that was shared. Um, so in terms of performance analysis, um, we break that into five areas. Um, so we look at Ofsted inspection judgements, we look at pupil characteristics and particularly around send, we look at attendance, we look at exclusions and we look at attainment and progress. Um, and so what we've done today is just, is pick out, um, is pick out a few things that, you know, probably would be the highlights from that, from that section. You'll also notice as we go through that at the end of each of those sections, and we've included those in the presentation today, at the end of each of those sections, there's always a slide that does two things, which is a new thing that we've started to do. The first thing it does is it brings back that data to children and young people, and I'll talk about that in a second in relation to Ofsted. And secondly, it looks at the trails that we think, that basically what are the things we're still curious about that we should do further work upon beyond just the, the initial analysis. Okay, so if we talk about Ofsted first, Sheffield's, uh, Ofsted data at the moment is the strongest that it's ever been. Um, last year was the second year that Sheffield's been above national in relation to the proportion of good or better schools. Um, as the slide says there, for context, if we go back eight years, Sheffield was just around, just around about 10% below national in terms of the proportion of good or better schools. So obviously, that's a, um, you know, that's a significant improvement and very much to the credit of schools in Sheffield. You have here the end of one of the section slides, just to kind of quantify that a little bit. So percentages are obviously important and what this is, you know, what you would expect to find in a report like this. I think it's helpful to bring that back to children and young people. So what that improvement means in Sheffield is that there are 21,000 more young people in Sheffield starting the current academic year in a school that was good, that's judged by Ofsted to be good or better. Um, and that leaves us with just a fraction over 10,000 young people in Sheffield who started this year in a school that's not judged to be good or better. And you'll see all the way through the report, and I won't dwell on it particularly today, uh, but you'll see all the way through the report, we've tried always to bring it back to children and young people because I think that helps the discussion, um, rather than it just being about, you know, it's gone up 2%, it's gone down 1%, it's, it's that kind of conversation. Um, the trail in relation to Ofsted, the thing we're still curious about in relation to Ofsted, particularly in primary, is we appear to have this mismatch between our setting outcomes, as in the proportion of schools that are good or better in Ofsted terms, and our pupil outcomes. So we are above, uh, national in terms of the quality of education. We're still stubbornly below national in relation to our pupil outcomes. And I'll kind of come back to that as we go through, but that's our, that's the trail. That's the thing we're still, we continue to be curious about. Um, in terms of pupil characteristics and send, I'll just pick out a couple of things. So our, um, our cohort in Sheffield is almost 77,000 pupils at this point. Um, more than half of those pupils, 56% of those pupils, are either children who qualify for free school meals or children who have special educational needs or children who have English as an additional language. Um, and 16,000 pupils in Sheffield have at least two of those characteristics. So when we're trying to understand our cohort and when we're looking at how we drill down into our data, those are things that are, um, significant to us. Second thing that I've picked out particularly is in relation to send. So you'll have noticed that in the evaluation, amongst the supporting documents, we did three insight reports where we'd looked more deeply into things that we're interested in. One around attendance, one around outcomes, both of which I'll come back to later, and one around send. Um, the one around send, um, this, this slide here kind of unpicks the, um, or demonstrates, I guess, some of the focus for us there. So our send insight report is really pushing a focus on speech, language and communication as an area where we should focus as a city. And there are broadly three reasons for that. The first is that speech, language and communication is our highest first incidence need, our primary need. Um, and if you're looking at the, um, the graph on the screen, it's the one at the top there. And it's obviously, it's the highest and it's going up. Secondly, if you compare our incidence of speaks, language and communication in Sheffield to nationally, we would say that it is about half as high as you would expect it to be. So there are about 4,000 children and young people in Sheffield with a speaks, language and communication need, whether that be about delayed development or whether that be about a complex need. If you look at national figures, we might expect that to be close to 8,000. So there's something going on there for us as a city in terms of the identification. Um, and then the third reason that we've, we've settled on speech and language as our kind of, the thing that we feel we should focus on the most, um, is that we think it's the area that's the most generative. In other words, the area where if we have an impact on that, on that, on that issue, it will, it will, like a pebble in a pond, it will spill, it will spill out into lots of other issues. It will be supportive of other needs. It impacts on things like attendance, it impacts on engagement. Your ability to, your speech, language and communication, um, ability effectively has an impact on everything, doesn't it, in your, in your education and your wider life? Okay, um, in terms of the, the sort of end of, in that section, um, the area that we're, the areas that we're focused on, there are three areas in there that we're looking at for trails. One is around pupil premium. Um, Sheffield has less pupil premium pupils than some of the other core cities, which I think might surprise colleagues a little bit. And so we'd like to understand what's going on there a little bit more. Um, obviously changing send needs, we've talked about, and also aggregated needs. So for those young people with multiple challenges, um, what, what can further investigation of that help us to understand for schools to support those pupils? Um, in terms of attendance, um, that remains a concern. There's actually a relative improvement in attendance. If we were just looking at how does Sheffield's attendance compare to national, actually, our comparison to national is slightly better than it was. There was a time when it was outlying in terms of, in terms of our performance. We're actually, though, we actually continue to be really concerned about it, though, because what you have in attendance is a national crisis at the moment in terms of people's, young people's attendance in school. Um, and Sheffield's effectively, um, got worse, but not as much as other places. That's why we've moved into line. It isn't because we've got better, is essentially the point. Um, I've picked out two slides to share with you, um, that just unpick, um, the thing about that that we've then picked up in our, in our insight report. And it really is about the relationship between attendance and attainment. That's where we, that's where we would focus. So you'll see two slides. I'll do the second one because it's a bit bigger because there's only one piece of data on there, but the principles are the same. At least I will if it moves. There we go. Um, so the, the bar chart on the left, the blue bar chart, is showing you, um, what, what is the chance of a young person reaching an, an expected standard at a particular point? So the one you're looking at there is the proportion of pupils who get a four or better in English and maths at GCSE. The previous slide had early years, key stage one, key stage two and so on. So what you're looking at there is the first bar, bar is always 95% plus. The second bar is 90 to 95, the third bar is 80 to 90. So you're seeing there the decrease in likelihood of attaining as your attendance decreases. Um, the right-hand doughnuts with the, with the pretty colours is showing how those bands show up within that cohort. So what proportion of young people in that cohort are in those bands? So those are the two pieces of information. Um, essentially, it, when we look at Sheffield's Ofsted outcomes, Sheffield is the second strongest core city in the country out of eight in terms of its Ofsted outcomes. It's fifth out of eight in terms of its attainment and it's fifth out of eight in terms of its, um, also in terms of its attendance. There's, that's not a coincidence. If Sheffield's attendance was the third best, its outcomes would probably be the third best as well. So the focus on, the focus on attendance, which we think is really important, um, is built around the impact of attendance on, on attainment and therefore obviously on life chances for young people. Um, in terms of exclusions and suspensions, I'm, I'm really conscious that this isn't the point in this committee's cycle where that's a focus, but it's obviously part of our, part of our, um, part of the data analysis and part of our follow-up work, so I wanted to reference it. The further work in that space will be around understanding the patterns of suspension and, and permanent exclusion and better understanding the long-term impact of, of, on young people of suspension and of exclusion. But I'm sure that's an area we, you know, this committee will want to come back to. Um, in terms of attainment and progress, um, I've picked just three highlight, um, three areas to highlight. Um, this is the largest part of the, as you'd expect, the largest part of the, the full performance evaluation, um, because obviously that goes through every stage and every point of assessment from, um, early years all the way through to key stage five. Um, I suppose what, what I would say in terms of the trails for further investigation here is what we're trying to do here is get to the so what. So what we've got here, I think, is really, is a strong, um, is a strong level of, of analysis, but it's getting to the what are the things that we can do something about and what should those things be? So those trails are trying to get underneath, um, what drives low attainment? Um, it's trying to get underneath what's the potential impact of better attendance? What's the potential impact of better speaks, language and communication and, and early intervention in that space? The three, uh, the three points in the system that we've picked out are the obvious ones. So the end of foundation stage, the end of key stage two or the end of primary, and then the end of key stage four, as in the end of secondary. Obviously, there are, there are many others that we could look at. Um, just in terms of those three, I think that they do is illustrate where we are as a city in terms of pupil outcomes. So in the early years foundation stage, we are slightly better than core cities. And actually, we rank third out of the eight core cities for early years in terms of attainment. But we're 2% below national in terms of our overall, um, performance and we rank 117th, um, in, amongst local authorities in relation to early years. 117th is out of 151 or 52, depending on the outcome, to give you a sense, and is bang in line with our deprivation. So depending on which measure of deprivation we look at, and they're all a little bit out of date, um, but we're somewhere, you know, you would look at 112, 116, 120 as being our deprivation. Um, so what we see there is slightly better than core cities, below national, but in line with our deprivation, and you'll see that as we go through the data. So key stage two, end of primary, uh, in line with core cities, fifth out of the eight core cities in terms of how we rank, 3% below national at the end of key stage two. This is looking at, um, young people who, um, who get the expected, uh, the expected level in reading, writing and maths. Um, in terms of national, 3% below national, we rank 115. So again, bang in line with our deprivation, but below national. Terms of key stage four, last one, um, uh, in, amongst the slides. Um, again, both for attainment and for progress, we rank fifth amongst the core cities. Um, our core city ranking for attainment is, uh, sorry, our national ranking for attainment is 114th, so in line with deprivation. Um, our progress ranking actually is a bit higher, we're about, we're at 86, which obviously outperforms deprivation and is sort of moving more towards the middle. There is a consistency to this, though. So across all of the data, what you'll see is broadly speaking, in line with core cities, maybe third, maybe fourth, maybe fifth, um, below national, but in line with deprivation. The reason, though, that we would express some concern about it and the reason why in our evaluation we would flag the disparity between Ofsted outcomes, which are better than national, and pupil outcomes, which are not, is that that's a slight decline. So if you look at our data by 2016, 17, 18, we were doing slightly better than that. We were more in line with national, um, we were closer to national, and it's fallen back a little bit. Um, I'd just flag one more thing for you to look at. I know there's a lot of documentation attached to this, to this, um, discussion because of the evaluation. The Outcomes Insight Report tries to get underneath a couple of difficult, complex questions. Um, one is around what are the determinants of, uh, low attainment? So of all of those challenges that children, young people face, which are the ones that have, um, the greatest impact on their, on their attainment and on their outcomes? The two things that that pulls out really strongly, which I would want us all to be kind of focused on, one is prior attainment, which is not a surprise, but does very much take us down the route of always thinking what's the earliest point of intervention? Because our prior attainment significantly impacts what happens later. And the other one is attendance. At every stage, in every case, your attendance significantly and directly impacts upon, um, upon your outcomes. Okay, sorry, I thought, I thought I turned it off. That was not good. The second question we asked, we wanted to look at was, um, in relation to trying to understand the impact of our context on our outcomes. So the question I pose, I suppose, is if Sheffield performed the same but had a nationally average context, as in our cohort was made up in but had a nationally average context, as in our cohort was made up in the, in a nationally average way, what happens to our outcomes? So we can start to understand which of those areas we need to focus on. What you see, and it's on, I think, page eight of the, of the Outcomes Report is, when you contextualise our outcomes, actually they come very much into line with our Ofsted outcomes. As in they, they tend to be, apart from I think two, they tend to be at or slightly above national. So actually that disparity between our pupil performance and our, um, and our, um, Ofsted outcomes, our school performance, actually probably is more about our, our context, which takes us down the route then of saying, so what do we do? We focus on those things where we can impact upon that and support young people, um, to perform beyond our context. If that, if that makes sense. That's speech and language, that's attendance and it's early intervention. Um, and that's kind of where we, where we focus. Uh, last bit of the presentation, last two slides, um, just relate back to the document, to the, sorry, to the slide deck. And for each of those five areas where we've identified trails, it's just picking out what's the piece of work that responds to that. Obviously some of those pieces of work have been done and the insight reports, for example, you've had already as part of this. Other things are, um, will go into other working groups to look at specific issues that we're curious about. Um, but you've got there, uh, for each of those, for each of those, um, trails that we think we should follow, a kind of identification of, of how we intend to follow it and with whom and, and what we, you know, where we go from there. Um, last thing I'll say, and then I promise to be quiet, um, is, um, the, there is a tricky thing, I think, I've been doing this quite a long time. There's a tricky thing for committees like this, you know, when it's, with scrutiny before it was the same, which is you want to have a conversation about pupil outcomes and you end up having it in March, which is nearly a year after the outcomes have happened, because that's when the national release happens. The data comes out really slowly and steadily across the autumn term. It's pretty much all there by January, but it's, you know, you're certainly looking at post-January. So what we've tried to do here really is, is do this in a way that hopefully enables the committee moving forward to pick out the things it's interested in and then kind of schedule those things into the year, rather than having to just kind of wait for March to come along and, and then you get, you know, you get to talk about some data that's now nearly a year old. Okay. I'll stop.
Thank you, Stephen. That's great. I know we've met and discussed some of this stuff. Um, we have a regular conversation. I know councillor Dunne wants to come in, but, um, I don't know if anybody else wants to ask any questions on this one. Um, I think there are, there are, this is kind of for me helped to kind of, we, we've all been really concerned about attendance and it's something that we've discussed all year. Um, you know, and beyond and pri- and prior to this municipal year. And I know you said that, you know, exclusion and attendance is not on this agenda for this committee, but it is always on the agenda for this committee and it's an ongoing conversation that we're having about what, what is it we need to be doing? And I think the, there's the three things, is the attendance, as we know, um, I've, I don't know if we've actually got figures, but on the run-up to the MOBO awards, attendance increased in schools. And who'd have thunk it, you know, something creative and getting young people into school? What, what an incentive to get in and do something that you enjoy doing. So I think the conversation, uh, I think I'd like to know is what conversations are we having with our schools and academies about what carrots are we using rather than sticks to get our young people into an environment where they feel like they're really engaged in something really, you know, creative alongside the stuff they have to do? You know, it's the have to, want to stuff, isn't it? You have to come to do this, but you wanna go to do that and it's that. So how are we, what kind of techniques are, are our, our academies and, and our schools using? I think the explosions and a, a, a bit, I, I know that we're, we're having, uh, you know, deep diving into that piece of work. But there's the other key thing for me, which is the speech and language. And we're in every meeting we've been in, whether we're in, whether we're in health and wellbeing board, whether we're in, whether we're discussing early years, post sixteen, youth justice, whatever we're discussing, it kind of boils back down to a lot of our young people are struggling with their speech, language and communication. And I do know that we have a problem in the city and nationally when it comes to, um, training up and recruiting speech and language therapists. I know that, you know, within the council itself, we had a, we had a gap where we couldn't get into one of our, I don't know if it was in one of our, um, edge of care services where we needed speech and language therapists. And we just couldn't recruit one because there aren't enough. And I know, having spoken to our early years providers where they, you know, they identify really early on that children have got speech and language difficulties. They can often get a speech and language therapist in, but they're not always trained to be able to work with children with special educational needs or in early years. So it's that, what I'd like to understand is while we know there's a demand, we've got children waiting for, for all different assessments for different needs. And when it actually boils down to it, a lot of it, not all of it, but a lot of it is around speech, language and communication. So, you know, what conversations are we having with our universities and with our health, uh, partners around? You know, how do we recruit more speech and language therapists? Is there an opportunity to have qualified teachers and qualified early years workers that can, that can then train? They've already got a skill in working with children and young people, they've already got an early years background. So I think that, that's just the, the, what are we doing about the creative element of getting young people into school and wanting to go to school, which would be really good? And also what are we doing around the recruitment and retention of speech and language therapists? Thank you. I don't know if Meredith put around, or any, anyone?
So if I just go, um, around speech, language and, and communication, I, I think, um, uh, the team at the table can, um, have some great conversations. Uh, I think it'd be helpful, Stephen, to talk about the attendance, uh, working group that Greg is, um, leading. Um, I think it's really helpful to talk about the work that we've already started with speech, language and communication. I think the pivotal point for us is that we've got to stop looking for the answer in specialism and find the answer in prevent, um, prevention. So some of the conversations we've been having is actually we don't, we want good speech, language, uh, therapists, absolutely. But we want them to be working with a really defined cohort of children. And actually we want speech, language and communication to become a norm for every child. And whether we actually become a city of, um, communication, whether we become a city where we see that creativity and communication being key. And it's that pre-verbal conversations that are parents having with their baby before baby's born. The conversations you're having immediately when baby is born. It's going out to, um, places like farms, like, um, the playground to have those conversations. So how do we get that embedded? So it's not about a therapist, it's about how we do it around here, um, as part of the conversation as well. But I'll hand over to them.
It's like, in my case, go, so I think, I think three things I would say. So one is, although we bring this data here obviously in March, we, we bring the data through the partnerships. So primary, secondary, special, the locality groups, and we do that as soon as it's available. So that starts, you know, starts much earlier. So a lot of these, in all three of these areas, those conversations have been going on for a while about, 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 um, about what we're learning from that and, and what we do to understand it better. Um, I think the other thing that draws all three of those areas that you, that you picked together really clearly is that they all need a civic solution. None of those are things that the council can do on its own, they're not things that the school sector can do on their own. They're complex and they require a kind of much broader, uh, piece of work. So as Meredith referred to, in attendance, um, we've been looking at strategic partnership. That's going to now focus on attendance as its issue. Greg Fell, Director of Public Health, will chair that, which I think is an important signal to the kind of civic nature of, of that response. And then the last thing I would, um, uh, I suppose I would, um, would just say around the speech and language is to echo Meredith's point about this is not just about specialist services. So if we look at the SEND, um, insight report makes recommendations at the end, um, the specialist services in speech, language and, and communication will have a role to play in each of those, um, recommendations, but none of them are exclusively for them. They're actually all about the system and they're about how a young person is supported in their acquisition of speaks, language and communication in school, in their family and in their community. And so again, it can only be done with a, with a kind of civic response that, that tries to support in all of those spaces.
Thank you.
Just going back to your point about kind of what, what have we done to contact schools and find out what they're doing to get the students in? It's a very mixed kind of, um, market out there, if I'm perfectly honest. So I've been to schools where the regime is very strict, conformist, quiet, organised, and they have outstanding outcomes, outstanding attendance. And I've also been to schools with a very different, what we call pedagogian approach to schooling with amazing outcomes, amazing attendance, all in context where you wouldn't expect it. I suppose the one thing they've got in common, uh, and I'll refer to a point later on the agenda, is a real sense of belonging in both those schools, where belonging is palpable, so the identity shines through. While they both may look very different in approach and how they go about things, the, the commonalities are actually much more apparent when you visit these schools. And both, you know, the schools that are visited are all part of the Learn Sheffield network. So we, you know, we kind of, we're teasing out some of those conversations. We've got to be very open, I think, as an organisation on this side of the table, looking at where the strengths are without questioning why they do it or how they do it. But actually where the commonality for a school that's got ninety-eight percent, um, percent attendance in a city of eighty-nine on average. So we kind of, they're the conversations that we're working on at the moment. So it's not about, just about what brings them in, it's what's keeping them in and what's making them feel like they belong there on a daily basis.
Stephen.
Um, just to add one thing, so I think it's certainly is hopefully helpful to, to, to colleagues. I think, so personal, my personal view around attendance would be that there are two things that matter from a school leader point of view. You can have a harder or a softer, you know, approach to it, that's, that's a strategic decision for the school. But you need absolute clarity, so everybody in the building, young people, their families, staff, everybody needs to understand what our approach is. And then you need a really granular approach to support those young people who need extra support in relation to attendance. The point about an attendance crisis nationally though, is the volume it creates. So when I was a primary school head teacher in a, in a school with a, a kind of average kind of cohort, so average level of need, I minded amongst five, six hundred pupils have expected to have maybe twenty or thirty kids at any one time that we're working with in a really granular way to try and support them and their family with the complex things that get in the way of their attendance. In that school at the moment, I might be looking at sixty, seventy, eighty pupils. You can't work with sixty, seventy, eighty pupils in a really granular way. Nobody has that resource. So the volume here is also really important because in addition to knowing what works, it's also having the resource to be able to implement that. And when the volume is as tricky as it is at the moment for everyone, um, that's, that's quite significant, I think.
Thank you, councillor Dunne.
Thank you. Lovely to see you, Stephen. And thank you for your really comprehensive report. And I know the amount of work that you've put into this and that this has just been going on for years and how it's evolved. So it's really interesting. Um, for you to suc-, for you, for us as a city to succeed in attainment, it isn't just about what happens at school, is it? Do you know, and you've touched on so much regarding SEND. And we know that the massive cuts in youth provision and, you, you know. So are we linking this up because we know what needs to be done? So it's kind of, as you said, you cannot deal with the eight pupils granulate. It's what we are doing underneath. And I'm really keen as a local councillor, do you know, and everything else, that we are all doing our bit in order to deliver the school attainment and not just say, it's your problem, mate. Do you know, because that isn't how we deal with this.
Thank you, Meredith. So I think that's really helpful. Thank you, um, councillor Dunne. Um, so we have the Children's Delivery Group, which, um, brings together all partners where, um, some of this work sits, um, close to it. So we also have the Inclusion, uh, Task Force as well, which is the education system, um, which feeds into, um, that. So it is about looking at it in its totality. So we talk about the journey of the child rather than children's services. We talk about, um, the, the whole child, the whole family, the team around the child, team around the family. Uh, and our youth services, uh, and Pat's been working really closely with Chelsea about supporting some of our schools around that additional support that youth services can bring in as well. So yes, we are doing that. We need to get better at it and we keep on looking at how we're commissioning our resources. But the answer is yes, and we keep, we want to do more of that.
Can I just come back and say that I would like to see that disseminate more into our local area committees and disseminate it more through our schools? And I know that you do, but I've been approached recently and we're not here to deal with casework. But again, I was quite shocked that it came directly to me rather than through the other channels. Our lads doing a great work on this, but it's really, so we can really get more bang for our buck, really can't we then? Do you know, but I think that link with the likes even stronger, which I know that you're doing, but we do need to really strengthen that. So, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Dunne. Councillor Horner.
Yeah, this is a really useful report and, um, as I think everybody has said, we've been focused on attendance for a long time. I wonder if there is a subject, um, uh, issue within attendance? Because for instance, over the years and going back to the, going back a very long time to when I was at school, physical education was, was something that pupils either like or they don't. Um, and that there was a direct correlation that in those days, people not turning up, who were not particularly good at physical education. And I wonder whether that still happens, if it's still an issue of it's a particular thing on that day that, that the pupil doesn't like and, and to what extent that drives it and how we. And I, I spent some time over the years, for instance, um, as a school governor, bringing dance into the school curriculum because that appealed a different way to get people. Because we know childhood abus- obesity is a problem now. So I wonder whether, I want to focus on physical education per se, but difference, we know some kids obviously don't like maths or, or indeed English. So whether, what, to what degree the subjects that day drive some of that, I'd be interested.
Pat.
I'd say the biggest impacts, if we're talking subject level, is that of the whole school curriculum and being a, a balanced aspirational curriculum that suits the needs of the community and the child and the family and all of that. Um, the biggest impact to those kind of situations of I don't like maths, I don't like PE, I would say from my experience as a teacher and head teacher is the quality of the teacher. And the, and the quality of curriculum that that teacher is delivering. So the maths curriculum can be dry, it can be irrelevant, it can be taught in a difficult way or it can be brought to life and be made, made relevant for those that don't particularly enjoy the subject. So I think curriculum, then the individual teacher and the quality of the individual teacher.
Councillor Whitaker.
I think that's a really important point. After we discussed attendance once before at this committee meeting, um, a few days later, I was taking my granddaughter, who was in year eight, and three of her friends to netball practice, all who have good attendance. And I asked them the question why they thought young people didn't attend the school. Um, and the, the first response I got was, and these are their words, rubbish teachers. So I said, you know, give me some more details on that. Um, teachers, schools who use a lot of supply teachers, teachers who don't particularly teach the subject very well, don't make it very interesting for pupils to engage with. Uh, and they put it all down to the, to the staff at the school and to their ability to teach and the way they put the subjects across to people. So that was quite, I was quite, that was not a response I was expecting from them. Um, and I was quite taken aback by that. So I think that's, um, that follows on from what you were, you, you were, you were saying really. And it bursts that out, doesn't it?
Thank you. Thank you. Stephen, do you want to just wrap?
I, I mean, so the answer to almost every problem in a school is quality of teaching. So if we're talking about behaviour, we're talking about attendance, we're talking, you know, whatever we're talking about, quality of teaching is always, always the first thing. Um, and, you know, as, as colleagues said earlier on, it, you know, it's, it's, it's blindingly obvious, but at the same time quite reassuring that, you know, what, what was the impact of the MOBO awards and exciting things happening at school? Attendance went up, it's, you know, it's a little bit the same for me as a head teacher. It's quite reassuring to find out that going to school means you do better. You know, you'd hope that's the case, but it's quite nice to see data that kind of confirms that. But it, it's going, going to school, quality of teaching comes at the top of, top of every list, absolutely.
Andrew.
Uh, and then just to connect that back into the very first bit of data that Stephen shared with you on Ofsted outcomes. So it's a bit complicated, but the, the quality of education, which reflects the quality of teaching as part of that, is what's called a limiting judgement. So actually, if the quality of education in a school requires improvement or is inadequate, then actually the school overall is, requires improvement or is inadequate. So I'm just flagging up that with higher than average number of schools are good or better, that gives us a really good foundation on which to build, um, in terms of the alternative curriculum that Pat's been talking about and, and in particular to continue to focus on the quality of teaching. But that you, the, the, the sig-, that particular statistic's not insignificant because it actually made, that's a reflection of the quality of education.
Oh, councillor Ove.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I've been listening intelligently on, uh, some of the information or some of the views on, on teachers here. And, uh, one, one thing I would like to say, having worked with teachers and in a number of schools in Sheffield, that, you know, the overwhelming majority of teachers are absolutely amazing and do, and do a fantastic job in very, very, very difficult and trying. and do a fantastic job in very, very, very difficult and trying circumstances. It is, it is unfortunate that we have, the budgets for schools have severely limited what kind of teachers we can have. And many schools are going down the route of employing more, or less experienced teachers. And it's from my experience, those schools that have less experienced teachers probably struggle, struggle a bit more. But, you know, we need to try and keep in more experienced teachers within our schools because they do, they do an amazing job. And I think we should recognise that as an education committee, that the teachers within our schools in Sheffield, primary and secondary, do a fantastic job and they should, they should be rewarded a lot more greatly by, by the government and their schools for that.
Thank you councillor Ove, you've stolen my words. Yeah, Stephen, and then we'll, we'll move on from this one.
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, I'm not going to disagree with that, am I? Of course not. It does draw together your point with councillor Don, so doesn't it? That we, we do need to be mindful that we're operating in a space with the most challenging school budgets that have been in place, certainly in the time I've worked in education at this point. And I would also just back up your point in terms of recruitment and retention of teachers is a very significant issue nationally. You know, there'll be other parts of the country where that would be number one at the top of their list. It's not quite as difficult as that in Sheffield because a lot of people want to live in Sheffield, but it's still challenging even in Sheffield. And we need to keep that in mind, I think.
Thank you. So coming to the end of this report now, I think I just want to reiterate what councillor Ove said around the, the expertise of our teachers and the skill and dedication that they give to our children and young people. Many who go above and beyond teaching. There is all of the stuff around supporting families, safeguarding, you know, support for individuals and building really good relationships with some of our children and young people in the city, all against a backdrop of a nation that doesn't really value teaching, which is really quite difficult, you know. And, you know, we give our children over to teachers on a daily basis. And I think parents need to be supporting our teachers more as well when we, when we drop them off. And, you know, we need to be, as parents, we need to be supporting the structures in which our children and young people are learning as well. So I'd just like to thank Stephen for bringing this report. I'm really looking forward to whoever happens to be on this committee next year bringing in, you know, the, the work through the work programme so that we can continue to keep a track of and abreast of what's going on and as much member involvement as possible. So thank you for that. This report was for noting, so that it is recommended that the Educated Children and Families Committee note the progress in relation to pupil outcomes and demographics in school settings, following national releases on comparative data and demonstrating Learn Sheffield impact in supporting settings. Are we all okay to note that? Thank you very much for coming. So agenda item number 15, which is on page 171. I think this is Andrew, I think Joe might have left. So Andrew, this is the update on the development of the Children's Services Belonging Framework. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dale. So, I mean, I'll be relatively brief, but we're bringing in front of you just an update. We came to the committee in December to outline the start of our work on developing a belonging framework. We've undertaken quite a lot of work since then and the report outlines the kind of things that we've been doing. In particular, just to remind you that it is about driving change in the council and beyond so that everything that we do is actually very much focused on developing and deepening children and young people's sense of belonging in the city. We've been talking and working very closely with the youth cabinet and in particular trying to reach out to other colleagues in other parts of the council, but specifically Community Youth Services, we're working really closely with them. And we've got, had great support from their head of service, Charles Renahan, and other colleagues in that service as well in helping to shape this piece of work. The previously, the previous cabinet passed the youth strategy back in 2021. And an inherent part of that is then a regular young resident survey. So we're going to use the young resident survey, which is going to be launched in the autumn term to help drive our work on belonging. That's going to involve a number of areas of questions for young people, but not always just on things you might traditionally or conventionally think we want to ask young people out, like for example, what do you think about the equipment in the park? It might be questions about transport, where, what the bus routes are like, where things are located for them. In other words, things that other residents in the city would want to have an interest in that. So we're delivering that through every secondary school in the city. And we're aiming to get a return of about 11,000 young people, we hope, as part of that. Well, that, that will then help to shape the nature of the conversations that we are having as part of that. We're also looking at, that's a, that's a conventional survey, something goes out, young people respond to, but we're also looking at all the means of collecting the views of young people, including some types of technology or artificial intelligence as well as part of that. And that we hope will actually then enable us to have a richer view of young people's views as part of that. And we're also working with Professor Catherine Riley. She's a leading academic working on belonging. She's already done some work in the council, she's going to do some work with schools directly as well. That's not about taking away the colleagues in the council, the work that they will be doing, but it just adds a bit of energy and expertise as part of that. So we just wanted to check in with the committee today and in particular, just get your views on the proposed, the way in which we're going to do the consultations, whether the committee can help us to make connections beyond this committee, particularly to other members and to other organisations, and whether the committee endorses our approach of building up the consultation over time.
Thank you, Andrew. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this one? I think I'd just like to comment on the bullet point, 1.102, is how can members beyond Education, Children and Families Policy Committee become aware of the approach and for this piece of work? I think it's really important alongside the fact that we've just done our community parenting strategy, at which point I think blends in really nicely to our belonging framework as well. I think it's important that all members ensure that this goes to their groups, but maybe we look at how we get, get this through to some of the other committees as well. So obviously, this is an ongoing piece of work. And even when it's finished, it'll never be finished because it should just be evolving as it's going. So I think as members, we have a responsibility to make sure that we support this. So I'd like to, I'd like to do that. So the recommendation is to acknowledge our update and endorse our next steps, continue to be proactive in the development of the belonging framework, including the proposed engagement plan. Note that the development of the framework continues to be an iterative process as we gain the views of children and young people in ways that work best for them. And review and refine the framework and next steps based on this. And notice that the continued intention for ongoing conversations with the committee about belonging, including a further update presented at the committee in summer 2024. Are we all okay with that? Yep, that's great, thank you Andrew. So the next item on the agenda is agenda item number 16, which is an update on work related to the race equality by Children's Services. And I think we've got Amanda and Bob presenting this one. It's on page 193 of your pack, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Bob Cuffigan and I work in education skills as a school advisor.
I'm Amanda Alton-Brown, I'm Assistant Director.
I suppose as councillors can see from the form that we submitted for that, it was a update just to show the momentum that children's services are making. It really fell into a few categories. One, Amanda and I's involvement with the EDI corporate strategy. The second one was children and young people being pressed in at everything we do with the lens firmly focused on hearing their voice. Another particular one to show how it segues into belonging with the children's services working alongside the Race Equality Matters and implementing Race Equality Week. And also myself and Meredith have been at work with some, in supporting our Black and Minority ethnic school leaders, their middle leaders and other aspirant leaders to form a race equality leadership group. And I suppose probably easy, if I just sort of supplement myself, does anybody, any questions from that really, if anybody does?
Any questions or comments on this report? No?
Just a comment. Yeah, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done and how important it is that such an important commission has fed in so wrong, so regularly into this committee. And that I know that you are listening and that you are making sure that feeds out and connects with all the others. So it's just another layer, but I just want to thank you and I found it really valuable as part of a committee member.
Thank you.
That's very kind of you to say that. We're very passionate about including our young people in this debate because we'll take them with us on it and listen and learn from them.
Thank you. So the recommendation is that this committee note the children's services progress in relation to the implementation of the race equality initiatives, both cooperatively and with our children and families. Are we all happy to note that? Thank you very much. I'm just mindful that it's almost, thank you, it's almost 25 past. Are we all right to extend until quarter to five? We've only got a couple of items left on the agenda, the meeting's due to finish at half past. Pardon? Yep, okay. I might want to say a really big long speech. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is agenda item number 17, which is on page 205. And it's the creation of the task and finish group for, to oversee the work to develop practice and policy in relation to home to school transport. And you don't look like Meredith, Mark. Okay. Okay, fire away.
Very, very quickly, I think it's a request to create a cross-party task and finish group. The membership will be from within this committee. I think the committee would be, the task and finish group will be able to co-op other members. And I think the primary focus would be to just deal with three specific issues. Look at what's happening with the looked after children and the transport arrangement for those if they are in receipt of birth free and scholarship and attending a private school. Zero bus, zero fare bus passes for travel to fit schools and what other local authorities do. At the moment, that's a choice in Sheffield. And finally, look at the information which is provided to parents when admissions are happening and transition taking place from primary to secondary school. The plan is that between now and September, the group will meet four or five times and bring back a report for approval in September, September committee.
Thank you, Mark. I think on that, this has come at a really difficult time because this is kind of end of municipal year and this committee might not be this made up of these people at this point. So are we proposing that we, we start this now and then carry on the work in the background before the end of the municipal year? Or are we proposing then that we wait until June before we've got a new committee and then recruit from that committee? I'm just trying to work out, do we do it with the group that we've already got? Because this came in December initially as a request, or do we wait? I think we're happy to take your advice, but I suppose it might make logical sense to wait for June for the, the new committee. Hopefully, a number of you will remain on this committee and will have some consistency and be able to drive that forward then. Are we, are we all all right with that, councillor Ove?
Yeah, I'm happy to defer it till then and make, make a decision once the new committee's in place.
And councillor Whitaker, are you okay with that? I know you're on the admissions committee.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I might not get re-elected, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can we ensure then that that goes straight on to our work programme for June? Oh councillor Hirst, sorry.
No worries. It's just, just to prove I have read all the papers, it's in the terms of reference for the Policy Committee Task and Finish Group. It says that membership should include two Labour, two Lib Dem, on green. There is a fourth group on the council and we would welcome inclusion.
We'll address that councillor Hirst prior to June and we'll get advice from Dem Services on that, definitely. Thank you very much. So on this paper then, this paper's for, the recommendation is that we appoint a task and finish group to oversee work to develop practice and policy in relation to home to school transport. And we're going to do that in the new municipal year, are we all in agreement? Thank you very much. So now we're on to agenda item number 18, which is an update from Meredith, Strategic Director of Children's Services. Thanks Meredith. So I'm just willing to take any questions? Any questions for Meredith on her report? No? That's great. So I'm just going to take the chair for a minute then, and just for a couple of minutes, just to, this is our last meeting of this municipal year. So I would just like to take an opportunity to thank all members. I'd like to thank councillor Rauf for his support as co-chair and councillor Marouf, who has just had to pop out, for working really closely as a trio. I think we've all been really supportive of one another and we've worked really well together. So I'd like to thank you both. I'd also like to thank all members of the committee for your commitment to extra briefings, additional workshops and your attendance. And also subs who are not here today, so people that have subbed and really given some really important and challenging questions to the committee. I'd also like to thank all officers, past and present, who've really done some really hard work this year. You know, we've had some really challenging things come through and there will be more challenges to come. And I just thank you for all of your commitment and dedication to this committee and to the children of the city. And I would also like to thank our partners who we've met with, our schools, our youth providers, our alternative provision providers, all of the people that we're commissioning for the work that they're doing in Sheffield. And I'd like to thank the members of the public who've been to this meeting, particularly the group of young people that came right at the beginning of this municipal year and challenged us with regards to our work around race equality stuff. I think, you know, they really demonstrated how powerful young people can be and really held us to account. So I'd like to thank everyone really for this year and hopefully look forward to working with you all again next year, fingers crossed for everyone. Okay, but thank you everyone, thank you.